I will call the special town council meeting to order. Mayor Mark Sukup.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Brett Hanson.
Attending.
Thank you. Lisa Lake, Councilmember Lisa Lake.
Here.
Councilmember Robert Oxmaker.
Present.
Councilmember Luke Wagner.
Here.
All right. We will begin the meeting of the executive session pursuant to section 24-6, 402, 4B, and 4E CRS for purposes of conferences with an attorney for the town for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions related to pending litigation, Timneth Trail LLC versus Timneth, Town of Timneth, and for determining positions to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, instructing negotiators related to the upcoming mediation in such case. What do we do now?
Okay, you need to have a motion. You need to have a motion to go into that executive session that you just called.
Okay, Karen.
And Mark has already read it out, right? I don't have to read it again?
Yeah, I've read it out.
Okay. I move to go to executive session.
Do I have a second? All those in favor say aye. We are now in executive session.
Okay, is this a closed-loop room for Zoom purposes or do I need to be moved to another Zoom room with you guys?
You now. That's what they're telling me.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
This means adjourned. We are now adjourned for all purposes.
To the next one.
Yeah, and we'll come back let's say just a little before ten after.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I will call the regular town council meeting to order at six oh nine. Mayor, Mayor Mark Sukup.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Brett Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Lake.
Here.
Councilmember Robert Oxhopper.
Present.
Councilmember Luke Wagner.
Here.
All right, amendments to the agenda, Aaron. Public comment. Melissa.
Yes, we have received three, no, four written comments, one from Rachel Spurrier, one from Dr. Belle Jenkins, one from Irvin Christie, and one from Dan Etheridge that will be attached to the minutes for this meeting. We also have to speak in person Shayna O'Kelly.
How many people are in person?
Three.
Three, thank you. Okay. Shayn, is it?
Shayna O'Kelly.
My name is Shayna O'Kelly, and like the Lorax, I come to speak for the trees. I understand that you're not voting on this issue yet, but I want to urge you to reject the Ladera proposed development overlay amendments. The code was established in 2020 to create a clean, green, and serene town, but by allowing the Ladera development amendments, this area will be far from green. Drip irrigation is more economical and wastes far less water than sprinklers, yet Ladera wants permission to use sprinklers instead. The original code requires drip irrigation for sound reasons and is more efficient and waste less water. Ladera has no discernible reason to require sprinklers unless they're trying to go a cheaper route. The developer saving money should not be a reason to forego environmentally friendly regulations that were already in place. This includes requiring the developer to use drought resistant grass, not Texas hybrid bluegrass. There are other grass varieties that save more water and are more drought resistant, which should be required of the developer. The trees the developer plants in this Ladera area should also stick with the original three and a half inch caliper measurement for large trees and two and a half inches for the medium and small trees. Larger trees will provide more shade, and I cannot see a valid reason for the developer to change the tree requirements. Your job is to not save the developer money, but to protect our town's resources and hold new developments to the previously approved standards. Section 1.8.3. E of the landscape plant standards and buffers is also concerning. The original verbiage reads that the lots, buildings, and parking areas shall be located to preserve and promote the health of existing trees, but Ladera wants the phrase "determined to be preserved" added to this statement. This is unacceptable. Who selects the trees for removal? How many are they allowed to remove? Who decides how many they can remove? Is there a size limit on those trees and a location from which they may not be removed? The developer should not be allowed to remove any trees from the area unless it is determined to be diseased by an organization outside the developer's or town's influence. If you allow one developer to remove one tree, what's to stop another from removing two, three, or more? Do you know the story of the Lorax? In that town, they started with one tree being chopped down, and it led to the entire deforestation of the whole area. The trees in this area should be protected for the herons, eagles, and other birds and animals that use those trees for nesting. The council should not allow any changes to the 2020 comprehensive plan that could threaten existing trees or wildlife. I have been in contact with many organizations, including Parks and Rec, CDPHE, Save the Colorado, Save the Pooter, and the Sierra Club, and I am keeping them updated on this situation. And I just want to leave you with sage advice from the Lorax. Unless someone like you cares a whole awful lot, nothing is going to get better. It's not.
Thank you. Melissa.
Brian Kurth.
Hello, I am Brian Kurth, and I live at 4029 Kern Street in Old Town Timneth. Mr. Mayor, I would appreciate it if you would be present. Can I pause mine until he's back, please? What is the rule? I don't want this part of my three minutes. I would like the mayor to be sitting present when I speak.
Well, he has elected to go out the door. I don't think he's coming back, Brian.
Despicable. Following a public records request in March 2023, the town of Timneth disclosed that it has never conducted a competitive request for proposal process for the work it contracts to TST consulting engineers. Since 2011, TST has billed the town of Timneth more than $17 million without a fair and transparent competitive bidding process. And already this year, TST has billed the town of Timneth nearly $1 million. Let me repeat that. Since 2011, TST has billed the town of Timneth more than $17 million without a fair and transparent RFP process. And already this year, TST has billed the town of Timneth nearly $1 million. Now, here's where it gets really interesting. The town staff, who routinely recommend and refer business to TST, are, in fact, TST employees themselves. That's right. Timneth's Director of Public Works, Director of Community Development, and until recently, Senior Planner, are all TST employees working under contract with the town of Timneth. And while acting in their capacity as town employees, they have a clear and present conflict of interest when recommending who is awarded contracts with this town. This, of course, is not news to this or previous councils, who knowingly, year after year, contract after contract, have allowed this to continue, despite persistent concerns from citizens, including a member of the town's finance committee. Mr. Mayor, wherever you are, you ran on a promise to stop these questionable business practices. You have less than a year before your term ends. If you're going to keep your promise, now is the time to act. Take a small but mighty step toward transparency and integrity tonight, and vote no on Resolution Number 46, Series 2023. Thank you.
Joe Yosek.
Thank you. So I've been a Timneth resident since 2016. I live in West Village. And my talk today will not be as detailed as some of the previous speakers. So really, it's just talking about, you know, where the town is going. I think it's important to have good planning with feedback from residents so that our growth is smart and meets the current and future needs of the residents. And I think a lot of residents would agree with that. And I do think there's concerns that a lot of recent stuff has gone away from that. So I know it's not being voted upon today, but I'm against the code variances for the hotel, which I guess is a La Quinta in the storage facility. And I do think after this special election, where Timneth residents overwhelmingly said, we don't want these giant eyesores that are environmental dangers, that you guys need to keep that in mind for future decisions. And just, you know, the town council should be working for what the residents want and not just rubber stamp what the developers want. And, you know, these developments that need like dozens, hundreds of variances, maybe there's something wrong if that's what they need to, you know, get allowed to build. And I also think some of these are going against the, our 2020 comprehensive plan. And just quoting from that, "Our goal is to maintain Tim's small-town character and support and manage growth in a responsible manner and provide a destination community that is clean, green, and serene." I think a lot of these developments are not, you know, being responsible, and they're not clean, green, and serene. And then it's a totally out of, out of different topic. I do wish the police would enforce people running stop signs because it's a huge issue, and someone's going to get run over eventually. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is that Melissa? Okay, consent agenda. I'm going to break this out. Approval of July 11th, 2023, June 30, 2023, July 14, 2023, check register. And I would like to move first reading setting of a public hearing on August 8, 2023, ordinance number 13, Series 2024, an ordinance for the Ladera Plan Development to the business section of the agenda. So do I have a motion to approve? Let's do it two ways. Motion to approve the consent agenda for A, B, and C.
I move to approve the consent agenda of the meeting minutes and the check registers.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The first, the first reading setting, a public meeting, want to move that to the business section so we can have a discussion of an item there. So I don't think, all I do is ask, and as long as no one has an offense, yeah, okay. All right, mayor and council reports. Council.
I would just like to say that this past week, I was driving around Timneth, and I was amazed how beautiful our town is. And I want to thank staff for that work. I want to thank them for all their hard work. We really do live in a great place. So again, thank you, town staff, for your work of keeping things clean.
Any other? I make quick comment. You know, we've got some incredible people doing our events. Courtney and Callie, and I was at movie night, and they did just such a great job. And it's, 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 you know, people there are happy, and, you know, it's well attended. And, and so I'd like to compliment them on doing such a great job. Anybody else? Finance report, Lisa, any additional? Engineering report, Dawn, any additional?
Nothing additional unless you have some questions.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Community development report, Matt Blakely, any additional? Anybody have questions? Police report, Terry Jones, do you have anything extra? Okay, anybody have any discussion? Okay. All right, so that brings us back to first reading and setting a public hearing on August 8, 2023, ordinance number 23, Series 2024, an ordinance for Ladera Plan Development Overlay. I'm going to read from Carolyn, our lawyer, question that I asked her. And she, she says, "Good morning, Mayor. The mayor and I spoke last week, and he asked whether he would have a conflict of interest in connection with the Ladera application for an amendment to the Plan Development Overlay. My legal conclusion is that this does not constitute a conflict of interest. However, I recommend that the interest be disclosed and the remainder of the council vote on whether this constitutes a conflict of interest under Town Charter, Section 2.9." I donate $25,000 a year to Respite and Have for the last 10 years. I serve on a committee that is working to determine the new building location for Respite Care. I have no financial benefit. I do not get a nickel for doing this. In fact, it's a negative. Let's see. We have, she notes that we have a state statute providing that a local government official may serve on a board of directors or a nonprofit organization, and it will not constitute a conflict of interest to later take actions and benefit that nonprofit as long as the directorship is disclosed and serving on the committee. And you're serving on a committee is even less of a conflict than serving on the board of directors. So she recommends the following. One, a motion to remove first reading of Ladera to consent, which we did. Second, motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda, which we did. Come back to the amendment. Mayor discloses his interests, which I did. Carolyn advises that it is her legal opinion that this does not constitute a conflict of interest. The council votes on whether this constitutes a conflict of interest. So do I have a motion to either say it is or isn't a conflict of interest?
And is Carolyn with us online? Carolyn, are you here?
I am. I am, yeah. Sorry, I'm here remotely today because I'm on vacation. But there, the mayor was absolutely correct that there is a state statute that says, and it is Section 2418, 1095 color revised statute, says, "Notwithstanding any other provision of this Article 18, it is neither a conflict of interest nor breach of fiduciary duty or the public trust for a local government official who is a member of the governing body to serve on board of directors of a nonprofit entity, and when serving on the governmental body to vote on items that may pertain to or benefit the nonprofit entity." This, as noted, this is not, he's not serving on the board of directors. He is serving on a committee for the nonprofit. And so it is indeed my legal opinion that that would not constitute a conflict of interest as he does not personally or financially benefit. Neither he nor his immediate family receive services from this nonprofit. And the nonprofit isn't even the one making the application. So they're not directly involved. They're indirectly benefiting from the PD overlay amendment.
Appreciate that clarification, Carolyn. Thank you. Pardon?
Okay. Again, do I have a motion?
Given that our charter defines a conflict of interest as a substantial personal or financial interest, I would move that the, there is no conflict of interest in the matter of the mayor voting on the upcoming, on the PD overlay amendment that is in discussion at this point.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I'll recuse myself from that vote. Okay, so that takes care of that. So what we do need to vote on is.
Just, just for the record, we might want to solicit the nays.
Oh, all those, I heard four, there's only four of us. There, all those opposed to the motion? Okay. Carrie unanimously with one abstention. Then what we do need to vote on is setting a public hearing on August 8, 2023, ordinance number 13, Series 2024, an ordinance for the Ladera Plan Development Overlay Amendment. Do I have a motion to approve that?
Could I make a quick comment on it?
Sure.
Simply just that we've gotten a lot of, for staff here, we've gotten a lot of information our packet regarding this, both from the applicant and from those opposed of the Ladera development. So, and there's a lot of references to the big picture of the development. I would just like to make sure that the applicant is prepared to address what the big picture of the development is and how these specific action items will fit into that big picture. And then with that, I would, I'll move to the motion here. I would move. I move to approve ordinance number 13, Series 2024, ordinance for the Ladera Plan Development Overlay Amendment, setting a public hearing on August 8, 2023 for the first reading.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
And just for clarification, our first reading is today, and we'll be setting a public hearing and a second reading on the date to be determined.
Okay, thank you.
Except that the date to be determined, the date is August 8.
Yeah. Okay. Ordnance number 12, Series 2023, an ordinance for the vacation right-of-way adjacent to Saratoga Falls subdivision. Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor. As we, there we go. As you mentioned, this is an ordinance for a As you mentioned, this is an ordinance for a vacation of right of way adjacent to the Saratoga Falls subdivision. The area and subject is highlighted in blue there. What that area is, is the original old Prospect Road right of way. In two thousand twenty-one, the Saratoga Falls subdivision platted its third filing and created the new right of way for the realignment of Prospect Road, which also included the intersection of Prospect and County Road three. And that new alignment of Prospect Road was finished in two thousand twenty-two, removing the need of this right of way for, and then will be replaced with access and utility easements that are needed. And do, and normal course of procedure for vacation of right of way is that the property will be split and then dedicated back to each adjacent property. In some cases, the adjacent property is Saratoga Falls. In other cases, there's three other landowners that are adjacent to right of way, which will get additional property. And then any access and utility easements will be placed on top after the fact that are needed for those public utilities or for other access that those property owners need. Staff reviewed this application and found it to be in compliance with two nine twelve nine five where the facility rode and writes away exchange, essentially because the applicant is requesting this and the actual constructed road is located elsewhere on the property. So since they realigned and reconstructed the Prospect Road into a better alignment, that's where staff felt that this right of way was no longer needed just because they did an exchange of right of way for the town. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. That, yeah.
Kevin, seems to make sense, but what's the harm in not doing this?
The harm in, would be still town of Timneth ownership and maintenance. So we would still have to be out there maintaining as the town any of the old right of way from that standpoint. So with it going back to property owners, it is then their responsibility for maintenance, anything that they do with the property.
Makes sense, is there any potential that, you know, this would make sense to hang on to this as a right of way for, you know, future bike path or ped path or anything like that?
That's where, if anything, easements would be placed on top that are needed with the development of Saratoga Falls. And with the Dead Man Lake in that area, there's, and on our post trail, or pros map, there's not an intention for a community trail that would go along the old Dead Man Lake. If anything, it would be on the Prospect Road, that road sidewalk, and then into the community of Saratoga Falls, and then down through other communities through the south.
Yeah, thanks.
Anybody else? Any questions? Do I have a motion for ordinance number twelve, series twenty twenty-three, and ordinance for vacation of right of way adjacent to the Saratoga Falls subdivision? Whoops, wait, I need a public opponent, yeah. Do we have any people sign up for a public hearing?
Nobody signed up to speak on this item.
Okay, so, so we call a public hearing and then close it, don't we?
I will open the public hearing at six thirty-two. We have no one signed up to speak, so I will close the public hearing at six thirty-two.
Thank you. Ordinance number twelve, series twenty twenty-three, and ordinance for the vacation of right of way adjacent to Saratoga Falls subdivision, do I have a motion?
I move to approve ordinance number twelve, series twenty twenty-three, and ordinance for vacation of right of way adjacent to the Saratoga Falls subdivision.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Res, ordinance number twelve, series twenty twenty-three, and ordinance for the vacation of the right of way adjacent to Saratoga Falls subdivision. Resolution number forty-six, series twenty twenty-three, a resolution approving the construction phase of the Timneth Parkway Improvements Project. Don.
Yes, sir. You have the, the write-up that we did for this in your packet. I'm thinking there might be some questions. I'm here to answer any questions associated with this.
Do you have any comments first?
No, other than we, we received five credible RFPs when we went through the, the RFP process. And our recommendation is included in your, your packet.
Okay, council, comments? Yes, please.
So, Don, how were the proposals scored?
We, we had a scoring process that had about six different criteria. I think they were in your packet. And we went through those things, everything from the price to the quality of their proposal to the, the people that were involved, to a bunch of different things. So it was all in there. We scored it and, and you saw the scores there. And we, we recommended from that scoring process.
And in the six point eight million, is any contingency in that six point eight?
No, no. That's, that's their number.
Air being Connell, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, you keep going, why don't you keep going? I know you had some concerns, well, well thought out concerns, so go ahead, please.
How much of the railroad is contingency? So when you said the railroad, we've got authorization and construction costs, what is seven hundred and fifty thousand? How much of that has contingency in it?
Well, we, we recommended to, to move that to a hundred thousand, so we're going to have a noticeable contingency on it.
So you're saying a hundred thousand in that is, that's the number?
Correct.
Okay.
How are you doing on, do you mind if I ask a question, Luke? How are you doing on negotiating with the railroad to get, but over the top of it?
Sure. Actually, we've been doing very well in the last several months. So right now, the application is at the PUC and it's being reviewed by the PUC now. We expect that the PUC will be making a judgment on that within the next two to three weeks. And at that point, we'll have a, an approved crossing.
Any indication, I mean, it doesn't look like it's going to get approved?
It does.
Okay. Okay, great, thanks, go ahead, Luke.
And, and I, I think if, if I was looking at the budget correctly for this project, we had seven point seven million in Parkway improvements plus another three hundred and eighty thousand in the capital project for fiscal year or for twenty-three, is that right?
That's correct.
And, and now we're at nine point two million for the project, is that right?
We are at nine point two, correct.
Okay, and I just want to know, that's, you know, twelve percent was the number I got on this one. And I just want to understand the gap that's occurred here.
Okay, there was, there's two things that caused the gap. Number one, I'll, I'll point to just construction costs that everybody's having a hard time keeping up with as far as the increases associated with that. Second, there were several items that were excluded from the overall cost. We didn't, we didn't catch that actually until just before the bidding process. And so, as you know, the design of this is by the developer. The developer's engineer designed this entire Parkway and their costs and their detail were given to us to, to take care of the bidding process. We did vet that at the start, but we missed the fact that they had not included some things that had to be. And so about half of that number is, is components that have to be added. And the other component is cost increases.
Done. Just going to show my ignorance probably. But it's my understanding that the Timneth Lakes development will be paying for this, this Parkway?
They'll be paying fifty percent of it.
Fifty percent.
Correct. Ultimately.
And what number is that, Don? So like, is that the fifty percent of the nine point two? Is that, what, what number does that mean?
That means fifty percent of the fully completed four lane Parkway. We're building two lanes now. It's, it's, I'm going to say the, the first part of this is going to cost more than the second part. So let's just think of it in terms of the completed four lane road. They owe fifty percent of that completed four lane road. They are escrowing dollars associated with that every time they have an approved plat. We have approximately two and a half million dollars in escrow going towards what they have to, what they have to pay for this, for the conclusion of it. The, the completion of the four lanes. That's based on an estimate, which is low. But we also have a true up component in the subdivision improvement agreement that requires them to pay the delta of what they've contributed versus what actual costs are at the completion of the four lanes.
So let's say, you know, we, we look at maybe eleven million dollar project.
Correct.
Right, and so, and if I'm understanding correctly, they would have to come with the five point five million in that sense?
That's correct.
And whatever they didn't escrow versus now versus then, they would come at that point.
Exactly right.
Okay, thank you.
And, Don, do we have a guess as to the timeline for the completed four lane, fully finished project?
Our guess is probably five years from now, after five years from this being completed. And this won't be completed till next year.
Okay, thank you.
Probably spinning on that same question. How, when do you think you'll have the two lanes in?
The, the schedule presented by Connell will have it completed by summer of next year.
And that's including the railway?
Yes.
Because we're assuming that that will all be settled?
And it looks like it's going to, based on what we just found out as far as the PUC approval process, it should dovetail to where all that can be completed at the same time.
So I, I have a comment later about the approval amount, but I don't want to interrupt that if questions.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I'm just hesitant with ballooning costs. I absolutely support this construction and I support the railroad. There's no doubt in my mind. What I'm concerned about in this proposal is that there's things stating design being finalized, design in process, other things that I feel could move against us in these numbers. So I'm hesitant, and when I talk about what number, I'm looking at the four hundred and seventy thousand in contingency. I understand the purpose of it, you know, I researched and I think contingency runs from five to fifteen percent. So I don't think the ask is unreasonable. I just don't know if we approve this as the nine point two. If the irrigation water taps come back in higher or the streetlights come back in higher, will we know as council? I'm just, I'm hesitant as this continues to balloon and, and I would like to see those rather than them just being gone through the system, you know, because at seven point seven and now we're at, you know, nine point two, I just have those concerns. And I'm looking to council on this and thoughts and if that's even a reasonable ask to say what it is, because I don't want to slow construction, I, I just don't, because it is very important. But I just, I would like to feel comfortable looking at, say, nine point two and say, yes, we're going to get there.
So let's just, I'll restate it, make sure I understand the question. Your concern is that it might not be enough? Is that correct?
Well, I'm concerned that we, yeah, just saying like design in process, design being finalized, that, that some of these, you know, we've got approximation of two hundred and ten thousand. I'm just concerned that, yeah, maybe it's not enough. And I don't know at what point, you know, I, when I look at budgets and I think about budgets, I, if the project for me is over, I want to have more scrutiny on it because of that. So I just don't, I don't feel like just blanketing four hundred and seventy thousand is the appropriate way to go as costs continue to increase.
I think he's concerned, Don, that on this proposal, are we giving you, giving Connell, you, whoever, a blank check?
Is that really the?
Yeah, I, I just, I want to know that, yeah, nine point two is a good number. And then contingency, if we're, if, if, how would we know if streetlights came back in and say three hundred and seventy-five thousand? And that's what we've put in here, you know, design and process? How would we know as council that all of a sudden the costs increased a hundred thousand in this? If we do that contingency of four hundred and seventy thousand?
Okay, good, good, good question, actually. As we go forward, all these we think are very conservative numbers right now. And then we have an RFP process, we've got a contractor that we've, we've recommended. As we go through this, we're working to, to, let's just say, value engineer every component of this project we can. And right now, and not to be too optimistic, I think actually the number's going to come down. We have opportunities in several different locations to value engineer this between ourselves, between the town and the contractor, to actually reduce the cost. So the, the numbers that we're presenting, we're very comfortable with right now. In terms of, we vetted all these things as far as like the streetlights and things. These are not things that we haven't purchased recently. We, we've got good numbers, we believe.
So where does the four seventy fit into that number?
Unknown things that none of us can predict. I mean, we go to, we, we go through any, any project with a contingency. To not do that is not responsible. And I think five percent is a, is a reasonable number.
Thank you.
Sure.
Did you want to say something, Robert? Pardon? Go ahead, it's your turn. So, Don, we sent this out to RFP and got five proposals back, right? We did. And the Connell proposal at over six point eight million is about six hundred thousand less than, than the next competitor, right? Correct. So that's a pretty significant, it's significantly below what, what the other four did. Correct. We use Connell for a lot of our, our projects. They helped with Bus Grove, they did the Harmony expansion. And that makes sense, they're local, they know us, they probably have a competitive advantage. But I'm wondering, you know, is the industry maybe thinking Timneth is going to award it to Connell anyways? So, so maybe we shouldn't bid? Do you feel like we had a, you know, a competitive bid process here? Absolutely. In fact, the, we, in the first round of this, I don't know that you followed this at all, but, but we had one of the contractors, several of the contractors misread the, the RFP process that we had as far as the date for a mandatory review where we, it was mandatory that the contractors show up and we show them the project and those things. So we redid it and pushed it out additional two weeks. And, and we got more contractors to bid. So I think, I think we absolutely got all the people that were interested in this. I think it was a very competitive circumstance. I do not think there's anything out there where people believe that Connell has a, other than the normal competitive advantage they have for being in the proximity they are to the project. The, the packet includes the Connell proposal, but does not include the other four. Can you speak to the differences in the proposal and why it is that Connell is able to do this cheaper? I think, okay, the, this was an RFP process, so I think you looked at the Connell response. It was a very professionally done one, as were all the other four. So this isn't just a bottom number. These folks had to answer a bunch of different questions about how they were going to do the project, the schedule for it, and everything in between. I, I think if I was to cut to the chase of what I think is the most significant competitive advantage they have, is they provide their own asphalt. And, and the asphalt plant is obviously very central to Timneth. I think that is a, a very compelling component of this. And I, I will note, they provided some background on some of their other projects. And was it Bus Grove specifically that they came in kind of impressively under budget based on their bid? Yeah. Yep, and, and they did that also on, on Harmony Road and under the construction period that we gave them quicker. And I'm not sure if this is, see, I guess this was ultimately Eric's memo. But I look in the memo under items currently are intended to be finalized.
But I look in the memo under items currently are intended to be finalized with this authorization. Um, one of them is the construction administration observation. Uh, that's to be provided by TST, uh, estimated at 5%.
Yep.
Um, this list TST specifically, and this is a project that's gonna extend into 2024, maybe 2025.
Probably not through 2024 unless something significant happens.
Okay, I I just saw that the last target is December of 2024, and to 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 see zero slippage would be great.
Yeah.
Um, so, um, you know, currently the state of the TST contract is, um, it goes to the end of this year, and unless council takes action, will renew for next year. Um, and then the future beyond that, um, you know, hasn't been, hasn't been worked out. Um, does this authorization need to specifically authorize TST to oversee this? Or um, are we really just authorizing the town, whoever is providing these services to to have the authority to do this and and to pay them?
Yes, and and I'll tell you, our, as you know, our contract, you know, has a clause in it that you can, yeah, you can let us go at any time, at at your desire. You know, and and I'll I'll also tell you that that every project that we've done before this, meaning the two Harmony Road ones and the Bus Grove one, we have been, you know, under the budgeted amount. Well, all three of those were, the highest one ended up at about 3.3.4%, and the lowest was 2.4%. So I have every confidence that will be lower than the number you see there.
Appreciate that, Don. Um, the, um, I guess this is under Timneth Landings Utility Work. Mentions that basically we're gonna front 1.1 million to get this water line done sooner rather than later, so as not to hold up the the project. Um, can you talk us through the process of ensuring that that we get reimbursed for that?
Absolutely, we'll have a reimbursement agreement, we've already talked to them about that. And this won't be a a reimbursement agreement that 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 is lags, it will be on a monthly basis. So uh, theoretically, how this is gonna work out is we'll get the the partial pay request from the contractor. We will immediately, well, we will review that, approve it to the point we can, take out the component, that's the water line, give that to the, to the uh, the developer, and he will theoretically have that check back to us at at or equal to the time we have to pay it.
I I love language like theoretically.
Well, I, the, I I'm gonna, yes, I I love that too. But that is, that is exactly how we're gonna do it. It's not gonna be theoretical, it's going to be absolute. So they'll be in breach of the uh, of the reimbursement agreement if they don't pay. I don't think that's gonna.
Okay. I guess I wanna be cl- clear, you know, exactly what are we authorizing here today? I've I've looked at the proposed resolution, um, and it just says, uh, required agreements and expenditure of 7.7 million. It doesn't say expenditure of 9.2 million. Uh, so I wanna make sure that we are, and I'm looking at the the resolution 46, series 2023, making sure exactly what we're we're approving here today.
Well, the council purchase, purchase authorization, it goes to 9.2. It looks like Lisa's coming up.
Yeah, I apologize, we worked on some language that didn't make it into the packet, but the request should be for actually 10,314,000 and then allow and authorize a reimbursement agreement of the 1.1. So that's the language that should be in there.
Okay, so I was under the impression the 9.3 included the 1.1 that we would get back, but but you're saying it's 10.4, and we're gonna get that back to get to 9.3.
Yes, it's 10,314,000, and then 1.1 will be reimbursed by the developer. And so we did work on language, it just looks like it didn't make it into the packet.
Lisa, would you stay there for a second?
Sure.
So what I'm being asked to sign on resolution number 46, series 2023, is approval to expend funds up to 7.7.
Right, that should be 10, 10,314,000, and also authorize a reimbursement agreement with the developer for up to 1.1 million.
Okay.
Sorry.
When's our?
So it could be a motion to approve the resolution with two modifications, to change the number to 10, 10,314,000 in the authorization from 7.7, and to authorize the town to enter into a reimbursement agreement with the developer.
Is that right?
Yes.
Don, when's our next action step? When when, if this gets approved, what's the first time that we tell someone to do something?
We'll, this will authorize us for Aaron to sign the contract and we to have a uh, a pre-construction conference and launch the project. I mean, it'll happen very quickly.
Listen to that. I gotta be, I'm I'm trying to be tactful here.
Sure.
Being asked to spend 10.3 million dollars. The presentation here was essentially, do you have any questions? The packet is you know, millions of dollars off. And uh, this frustrates me, frustrates me as a public servant responsible for authorizing these expenditures. And I appreciate Carolyn that you have solutions, just amend this, change the number from 7 million to 10 million. I'll leave it at that, this, this is frustrating.
And I-
Another option is you could table this until your next meeting on August 8th and take it back up with the correction made in the resolution on August 8th.
Well, Robert, let me, let me try to address that, and I apologize that I didn't have a more complete, um, let's just say, explanation. I really thought that with the, the information that was presented, that that if there were questions, I would have, I would, I I wanted to answer them. If I, and that was just my fault, okay? The 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 if, the information relative to the two different numbers, just like I said to Luke when he asked that question, there were items that were not included, we didn't catch that. There was the, the developer's engineer, uh, did those things, um, that's all on me. We didn't, we we should have caught it, okay? And then the cost increases from the last time the, the the budgets were done, which were done by them, that we looked at, and they were all consistent with with recent bids that that they had and we had. And it changed, the these numbers are going up monthly on us, and it's hard to stay with it. And that's, that's just a statement, not an excuse. All right, this is a project that's been in the pipeline a long time, it's a significant project. Uh, the water line was supposed to be completed by the developer. He didn't complete it, okay? It's a water line that's underneath the pavement, it has to be done prior to the road being built. And and that's why it's in this contract now. He was supposed to have had it done uh, over a year ago. Wasn't done, that's why we moved this thing forward, because he was procrastinating with everything that was out there. I'm not trying to throw him under the bus, I'm just trying to explain what the situation was. Uh, the the, the costs have escalated, and it's just the fact of the day. The 1.1 million dollars on the the water line, it's his expense, you will get the money back. There's, there's just no question about that, that that, there there isn't, this is a development that has 1,000 units on it, and it's gonna be um, uh, under construction in Timneth for another five to 10 years. So you're gonna, you will get that money, so it's not a 10 and a half million dollar job.
Don, do we, do we present any problem for you if we ask you, if we table this to come back next uh, time?
I'll give you an engineer's answer, okay? None of the numbers that are in front of you are gonna change, and we'll just lose two weeks of 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 good time of the year to work.
Okay.
Mayor, can I have something to add to?
Go ahead, Lisa.
I'm just thinking of what we, the process that we go through, for example, when we're approving the new parks, which a lot of the the money, th- there's a little more leeway, obviously, on that, and what features we choose and and what we wanna put into the park. But we usually have like, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, we usually have some kind of presentation that, not that it needs like a line item, like I don't wanna line item or anything like that, but just kind of uh, a, an overall, um, here's what's going on, here's the timeline, and I realize it's in the packet, but I also think that for a lot of our community members, I'm guessing, don't read the packet as extensively as some of us might read it, some might read it as extensively, but um, so I think what Mark was saying is like, could we have something like that, which kind of lays it out a little bit more, the timeline, um, just all of those pieces? Um, I I think is easier to wrap our brain around the the funding, the amount, when we see it all kind of like that.
Luke?
I'm sorry, maybe I missed this, is the scoring in the packet? I was looking, I just didn't see what page is on, and so I apologize if I didn't see that, and I was just wondering if the scoring of the proposals were in the packet.
I'm sure we sent it, I don't, I don't have the packet in front of me.
Okay, thank you. Uh, if we can.
I don't think the scoring's in there.
Okay, thank you.
I I think there's enough confusion here that, sorry, Don.
Okay.
I'm, I'm gonna suggest to the council that maybe what we do is table this and bring it up in two weeks when we have more confidence in what's going on right now. I don't think there's a lot of confidence in this proposal and and what's been laid out. And uh, um, I think, I think we need, we need a redo.
Okay, so Lisa, to take your lead with that, you'd want a more robust presentation.
That's my personal preference, almost like how we, when we do, when we're doing like, the parks example is the one that kind of comes to mind, where it has, here are some of the features, and I realize, like I said, that I don't want a line item, but just kind of a general overview of what that could be.
Very happy to do that.
Okay.
Um, do I have a motion to table um, resolution? I've got papers flying all over, does somebody have it handy to them? Thank you. To table uh, resolution number 46, series 2020, uh, 23, resolution approving the construction phase uh, of Timneth Parkway improvements project to our next meeting.
Mayor, I move to uh, table depending matter for two weeks.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is tabled. Um, any other comments? Down, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries unanimously.
That's okay.